Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kettering Planning Commission for Monday, August 16, 2021. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Miami Valley Cable Council for televising tonight's meeting and taping it for rebroadcast on Channel 6 and streaming live over the Internet at mvcc.net. It will also be recorded and available for later viewing on mvcc.net. Since this meeting is both audio and videotaped to form a complete record for possible appeal to City Council and/or the courts, it is important that anyone who wishes to address the commission will need to come to the lectern to speak into the microphone and give their name and address for the record. The Planning Commission is a volunteer independent body appointed by council whose mission is to hear all bodies involved and subsequently make a motion to approve, deny, continue, or recommend the application. All action by the commission can be appealed to the City Council. This time, I'd like to introduce members of the Planning Commission. On my far left is Carol Fisher, the secretary. On my immediate left is Connie Gah, our recording secretary. I'm Don Rethman, the chair, and on my right is Don Schimman, the vice chair. Members of staff present this evening: Tom Robillard, Director of Planning Development, and David Roller, City Planner. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and our agenda lists two sets of meetings: a June 7, 2021 meeting, which we do not have a quorum of members who are present at that meeting, so we will not take any action on that, and we also have the minutes from July 19, 2021. Do we have any comments on the minutes from July 19, 2021 as presented?
I do not.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Schimman?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Rethman?
Yes. All right. Now, it's my understanding we are going to flip some items on the agenda? Okay, so on the printed agendas, the first item was the lot consolidation for 4435 Dogwood Trail, PC-21-012. What we are going to hear first is the third item on the agenda, which is for 4435 Dogwood Trail. It is a conditional use, and it is PC-21-013. It is a public hearing, so... Mr. Roller?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Rethman. We have for your consideration a conditional use amendment approval, seeking approval of a new indoor practice facility at NCR Country Club located at 4435 Dogwood Trail. You'll see it here on the screen outlined in red. The proposal deals mainly with the driving range, which is here in the center of the screen in a vertical orientation. The surrounding property is zoned REA and REB; that's residential estate classification A and B, respectively. So is the subject property. It's a mixture of the two. So you'll see here on the screen that the subject property as well as the surrounding properties are both zoned REA and REB, a mixture of those. Within residential districts, golf courses are considered conditional uses, and amendments to those or changes to those are considered amendments, and they are subject to conditional use approvals as well before the Planning Commission, or sometimes staff, or sometimes just Planning Commission with a public meeting. In this case, Section 115311B1E states that an amendment that reduces the distance between any internal paved surface or building in adjacent residential zone land by more than 25% requires a public hearing before the Planning Commission. The proposed practice facility would be placed closer than that threshold, thus triggering a public hearing before the Planning Commission in your consideration. The project also would refresh the driving range itself, and grading for that has already commenced under a separate land disturbance permit. Here you'll see a copy of the land disturbance permit. This is the grading that is taking place. It is anticipated, however not proposed as part of this amendment, that there would be some new nets to be utilized once the range is placed back in service. We want to make sure that that compatibility is maintained and that the future compatibility is critical. We want to make sure that that's considered. The applicant's proposed practice facility consists of a single-story 8,000-square-foot structure, matching in material and style to other structures on the golf course grounds. The proposed facility would be used for indoor virtual golf and golf practice activities for NCR members. The proposed facility sits at the western edge of the existing outdoor driving range, approximately 82 feet from the Southern Boulevard right-of-way, as you can see here. Probably can't see that dimension line, but that says 82. The proposed location is compliant with the minimum required setback of 35 feet from the Southern Boulevard right-of-way. The height requirement is also met. We did review the application in accordance with the City of Kettering zoning code. A summary of that review was included in the staff report that was circulated to Planning Commission. Section 115308 lists the requirements for conditional use approvals. We reviewed the application in accordance with those sections, and we did include a staff analysis of each one of those criteria. We're going to go through that item by item here in just a moment to make sure that we are clear about each one of those findings that we have. Section A, and there's, by the way, there's A through I, I believe. I think it's I. So subsection A is the proposed conditional use shall comply with all applicable regulations of the zoning code. Right now, the proposed use inside are compliant and only require planning or this conditional use amendment to move forward with construction permitting. At the time of construction permitting, that's when we see landscaping, lighting, actual architectural compliance, all of those things that are typically regulated. Those fine details will be coming through at that level. So right now, what we're looking at is building placement as well as evaluating some of the larger, bigger picture items. And those zoning code regulations are mandatory, so compliance is mandatory when that comes We find that this requirement is satisfied. Subsection B, the proposed conditional use shall conform to the character of the neighborhood within the same zoning district in which it is located, and shall have no more adverse effects on health, safety, or comfort of persons living or working in the neighborhood, or shall be no more injurious to property or improvements in the neighborhood than would any other use permitted by right within the same district. The proposed facility adds to an existing approved conditional use. The intensity is not increasing. The activities within the facility are already occurring on the site. This is just taking some of those activities and putting them indoors. The architecture of the proposed brick structure is in keeping with the character of the residential neighborhood. The single-story construction limits the visual impact to neighboring views and is less than what is permitted within the adjacent residential neighborhood. Similarly, the location upon the site exceeds the minimum required setbacks in relation to Southern Boulevard. The amendment would have no tangible effect upon the health, safety, or comfort of the neighborhood, and the proposed structure exceeds the minimum requirements applicable to the adjacent residential neighborhood. We find that this requirement is satisfied. Subsection C, adequate utility shall be provided. There are no public utilities proposed as part of this project, and the site already has existing utilities, so we find that this requirement is satisfied as well. Subsection D, adequate measures shall be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to prevent traffic hazards and to prevent traffic congestion on the public roads. The site is currently fully developed. It conforms with current traffic and access standards. There is no increase in traffic that's anticipated, as this is limited to current NCR members, so this isn't a public facility, so we don't anticipate that there would be any increase in traffic. This requirement is satisfied. Section E, the proposed use shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of vibration, noise, odor, dust, smoke, or gas. This proposed use is not doing any of those things, so again, this requirement is satisfied. Subsection F, the proposed use shall not injure the use and enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair the property values within the neighborhood. Again, these activities are already occurring on the site. They've already been approved. This proposal simply encloses some of those activities within a new structure. A golf course is a very low-intensity use, has minimal negative impacts upon surrounding The neighborhood has and will continue to experience increased property values as a result of the, of their location to the golf course. Golf course-adjacent residential property is a premium, and it's due to its location next to the golf course. The course adds value to the neighborhood as an amenity, and its continued operation, maintenance, and reinvestment are vital to maintaining those values, so this requirement is satisfied. Subsection G, the proposed use shall not impede the orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted within the zoning district. This will have no effect, no such effect. This requirement is satisfied. Subsection H, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the proposed use shall not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Again, the proposed use will have no such detrimental effects. Requirement satisfied. And finally, subsection I, the public interest and welfare supporting the proposed use shall be sufficient to outweigh the individual interests that are adversely affected by the establishment of the proposed use. The proposed use will have no such adverse effects. That must be outweighed. So again, we find that this requirement is satisfied. That concludes our analysis and our presentation. We are prepared with a recommendation. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Roller?
I have no questions at this time.
Mr. Schimman?
Yeah, I just want to just kind of clarify some of the things you did say, just to clarify our role in what we're doing here. So basically, we are looking at those items that you specifically mentioned and just trying to determine if we agree with your assessments on those particular items, correct?
Correct.
All right. Then, when it comes to landscaping, I mean, we were given, you know, the petition and things, so we know what a lot of the issues are going to be discussed here tonight, and we expect to discuss them, so don't get the point that I'm trying to cut that off. But landscaping and lighting, those are controlled by something other than what we determine here, correct?
Yes, there are minimum standards that must be met in order to gain a building permit, structure permit, things like that. If you feel that there are additional standards that you want to impose to mitigate against potential negative impacts of the development, you can certainly require those as conditions of this, additional things to place as conditions upon this approval.
And I take it that's kind of the reason for the one recommended condition, that the landscaping has to be approved, so that really kind of makes a higher standard than the zoning would by itself. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. For right now, that's pretty much where I just wanted to make sure that we all knew why, what we were doing here this evening as opposed to trying to answer everything. So that's all I have, Chair.
Okay. One thing that I should have mentioned when we started, we only have three commissioners present here tonight, so any action by the commission will need a unanimous decision or otherwise, basically, it doesn't go forward, correct? So we either need three a's or three nays. So just let everybody know that split decision is no decision, so...
And if I could just clarify that, you can always, you can say yes, no, you can continue.
Yes, obviously, we can continue. At this point, is the applicant here, and does the applicant like to address the commission? Please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
My name is Donald Kiley, excuse me, with KNA Architecture at 135 West Dorothy Lane in Kettering, Ohio. I've been doing work for our NCR Country Club for nearly 22 years now, and we've been discussing this project on and off for many, many years. And in fact, we actually were pretty close to moving forward two and a half years ago, when, as you probably are aware, there was a fire at the club. So that kind of pushed this one to the back burner, and we had met with the city at that time. We'd even met with some of the neighbors at that time, just briefly, to explain what we were doing, give them a little bit of insight into where we were headed with this project. So we, you know, finally got COVID and then the fire behind us, and we were ready to start on this project, and we did start the grading of the driving range that David mentioned, which has been there for, you know, over 22 years. And all that just drains into a bowl. I mean, this is all around the marine area, so it's all sandy gravel, and so none of that drains off a site. It all drains internally into the actual driving range itself. As part of this project, we actually put in seven, what they would call sumps, where we just drew holes down and fill them with, you know, so all that water just percolates down into the ground then, so there's no negative runoff. We did get started on the grading on the range area and clearing some trees, and then the city contacted us about getting a land disturbance permit, and so we got, we stopped, we didn't go any further towards southern at that time until we got that in place. We did put a silt fence up along southern, which is the only location where there'd any detriment runoff due to construction progress. That's all in place now. We spoke with the city engineer, and we talked with the county as well. As David mentioned, there's a couple of large water mains that run just to the south of our facility that feed a pump house there for Montgomery County, and so we've had to work with the county engineers on that as well to make sure we don't disturb that. I think one's a 24-inch forced main. Don't want to get into that at all. We've angled the building to maintain as much of the foliage along southern that we could to the north, and at present time, we're pretty done, we're done with that area. We've cleared what we needed to clear. We've met with some of the neighbors. The one that most particular is at the north end of the range. He's most infected, and I know the club has met with him to make sure that what we're doing is satisfactory to him. There was discussion of nets. At this time, we're not trying to put nets along Southern Boulevard. There's already nets at the north end of this range that have been there for many years. They are hidden within the trees. They're black nets, so you don't even see them. Even in the wintertime, they're hard to see. We are proposing to raise those up. Just by the nature of golf and technology, people are hitting the ball further. We don't want to have people hitting the ball into that, I think it's the ridge there. We've even, you know, the club has talked with their HOA manager or president and explained to them what we're doing. He didn't seem to have any adverse feelings towards what we're doing. I think David talked about putting a limitation on that, and we have no problem. Right now, we're not going to raise them above the trees. We don't want that. We, you know, this is a premier country club. We don't want to make this thing look like some amusement park or something. And so we, you know, we're trying to take all the necessary steps to contain the activities to the course itself, but also protect the houses around it. We truly don't want to be hitting balls into the people's windows. The, we went so far as, you know, we've met with the neighbors, you know, probably a month ago when we started major work. There are some pushback on us using Southern Boulevard at times. We've talked with the city. I mean, it is a public street, and, you know, sometimes it's easier for us to gain access to the building pad area, especially for heavy, larger equipment, than to come up through Dogwood and then come down again. We'd have to traverse that 24-inch water main with any kind of equipment like that, which, that would not be the most beneficial for us or the county. So, you know, we've had some equipment offloaded there. We've kept that to a minimum. Most of the activities have been contained to coming up Dogwood through the main entrance and are staged in the parking lot area itself. The, I know David talked to me about the landscaping. You know, we're going to be submitting that when we submit our final building plans, and, you know, I don't know how many country clubs that don't try to do over and above what's required, so we have no problem working with the staff to make sure we landscape this while screening it properly. We don't want this to stand out as a sore thumb. That's, the club has always been, been a good neighbor in that respect. If there's anything else you'd like to ask me, I'm open.
Okay.
Nothing.
I'm good this time as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak for the applicant? If not, at this time, this is a public hearing, and we'll ask that if anyone wishes to come down and address the commission, please do so, and just give your name and address for
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Huffer and reside at 4468 Royal Ridge Way. I'm the president of the Ridge Association HOA. And I really just want to comment about the one project, modification to the existing driving range. The other project doesn't particularly impact the Ridge community. If you don't know where we're located, we're the northern end of NCR where the driving range is, so we're most impacted by golf balls that sometimes fly over the netting. Somebody else mentioned the technology has changed. Some of these young guys can hit the ball a long way. So anyway, my wife DeeDee and I last week met with Jeff Grant, the GM at NCR Country Club, on behalf of the Ridge Association to make sure, or to find out what the impact of this renovation to the driving range would have on our community. A number of our homes are right below where the netting is, and we have been hit on occasion through the years. In fact, unbelievably, we're about three houses away, and we had a window broken a number of years ago. And speaking with Jeff, he gave me some information that I thought I'd pass along. He indicated that the netting would be raised by approximately 30 feet, which would make the height of the netting approximately 55 feet. They are moving the most forward position of the driving range by 10 yards. So when he first told me that, I said, oh my, that's going to be an issue. But then when he also mentioned the netting would be raised by 30 feet, that was much more reassuring. And he also, basically, said that a player would have to hit their shot 350 yards in the air to basically hit over the netting. So I think we're in pretty good shape unless Bryson DeChambeau stops by, Will Askin hit irons only. Otherwise, I think we'll be in pretty good shape. So basically, from the Ridge community's standpoint, we don't really have any major issues. I guess I have a couple of questions of Jeff that we would like to maybe have answered. Several of our neighbors have indicated that the...
Yes, sir? If you could just address your questions to us, and then we will have them come up and answer those, so we'll take these down, so yeah.
Yeah, I guess one of our concerns is the earth movers. It's certainly sort of disruptive and annoying, some of the folks that sit out on their patios and porches. It's an annoyance, and there's a lot of noise, there's a lot of dust, there's quite a bit of odor as far as that goes. Wondering how long the earth movers will be on the project, what kind of timeframe we're looking at. The other question would be if NCR would possibly consider restricting somewhat the hours of the renovation of the driving range, because they're, I know, I saw them out on Sunday, and it seems to me like Sunday ought to be a day of peace and quiet for our neighborhood. So that, this may be a couple of questions I would address to Jeff. Other than that, Ridge Association and as their president, we don't have a problem with that project. The other project, I have, I'm also a longtime NCR Country Club member. I've been there since 1998. I have, you know, certainly my opinions on that, but as far as the immediate impact on the Ridge Association, Ridge community, it would be certainly the modification to the driving range.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
I guess at this time, if, if a gentleman can come up and address those questions? We'll just need your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. Jeff Grant, 634 Woods Road in Oakwood. I'm the general manager at NCR Country Club. So to address his questions, the earth movers themselves, we actually moved one out today. Most of the heavy lifting, if you will, with bulldozers is completed. We are in the process of putting irrigation in now, so most of that is light equipment, where we're putting pipes in the grounds, putting irrigation heads in the ground. We're grading it now with smaller tractors, picking the rocks out, picking up leftover golf balls, and then we'll be seeding it. So we look to be, have seed in the ground within the next two to three weeks, max, weather-dependent, so we should be very close on that.
Okay. I guess the next one was sort of maybe tied into that in terms of trying to get done, was work seven days a week, or is there...
Well, we're in the golf business, so it's seven days a week, but if there's a regulation that we need to stay within city-wise, we're happy to do that, but like I said before, most of the heavy lifting is done. These are contractors that we sub out. It's not most of our employees doing this, so they're on schedules which they have to get to their next job, so we're trying to get this done as soon as possible for two reasons: so they can get to their next job, so we can get the seed in the ground in that seed window for, to get grass growing this fall.
Right. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Robillard, any restrictions on construction?
There are restrictions during the daylight hours. Just double-checking for weekends, because I don't recall weekends. No, it's just, the restrictions are really just between 7:00 and 10:00 p.m.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Does anyone else out there wish to address the commission? Just please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of Planning Commission. My name's David Montgomery with Pick, Roll, Schaefer, Nebbling, 2700 Stratocash Tower, Dayton, Ohio, 45423. I'm here tonight on behalf of Pete and Kim Zorniger and some of the other neighbors that are along Southern Boulevard. Much of the comments that I have are really in the nature of introductory comments, and I think you're going to be hearing from a fair number of individuals, as Mr. Schimman indicated, and Mr. Roller as well. A petition was submitted to this council, signed by 24 individuals, citizens from the City of Kettering, expressing concerns. Some of those concerns may or may not relate to the conditional use application this evening. I also know that you received at least two letters from residents in the immediate vicinity also expressing concerns with the project. To summarize those, I don't want to say, and I certainly am not speaking for anyone who may follow me, the concern is not necessarily the conditional use itself. I think some of the concern is how that conditional use will operate. And while I know Mr. Schimman earlier, and again, Mr. Roller talked about sort of the purpose of this meeting, as we all know, the devil's in the details, right? And so part of the task before you this evening is going to be to hear the testimony and then apply whatever conditions that you feel are appropriate, should you make the ultimate determination that the conditional use should go forward. We've touched upon a couple of things here already, which aren't even part of my presentation, but construction traffic, or I'm sorry, on-site construction. That's just a prime example of where it would be appropriate or could be appropriate for this body to place a condition on no Sunday site activity. Or if Sunday site activity within your code is 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., you could modify those hours. So a lot of the testimony that I think you're going to hear, and a lot of the encouragement perhaps that you will also hear tonight, is not, again, necessarily in opposition to the use itself, but it's how do we tailor that use to best fit within the neighborhood? At the end of the day, a golf course is a commercial use. The only permitted use by right within the zoning district at hand is single-family, residential, detached. That is the, that is the standard. That is the litmus. So everything else should be gauged against what... So everything else should be gauged against what is the impact upon that single permitted use within this zoning district. You've heard, and I know that, again, Mr. Roller talked a little bit about some of this stuff, but, you know, the character of the neighborhood, maintaining the character of the neighborhood, that is an important concept, right? It's a direct criteria for this body to consider as it relates to the conditional use application that's before you. There is needed detail to determine what the impact is of this project on the adjacent neighborhood. For example, and I understand that building elevations, some of the detailed landscape plans are traditionally things that would come forward more towards the construction permitting phase of development. However, when you measure the impact of the conditional use upon the surrounding neighborhood, when you measure the impact of this that it has upon property values, when you measure the impact of what the proposal is as to maintaining the character of the neighborhood, as to any detrimental impact as it relates to the use and enjoyment of surrounding property owners, you have to immerse yourself into some level of detail as to the operations of the facility, the construction of the facility, and how the use is going to go. Again, this is a commercial use that is going into a residential neighborhood and that fact cannot be lost. One of the concerns I think that you'll hear, then again, that you'll talk about, obviously you've heard a little bit about it from the HOA president that was here before me, related to noise. I think landscaping is going to be a significant factor that you're going to hear about. Some of the concerns with landscaping are how does the city enforce whatever landscape plan is being put forward? I would submit to you that it would be appropriate to require a performance bond, which your zoning code allows within the criteria for a conditional use, to ensure that NCR does install the plan, the landscape plan, in whatever detail is agreed upon with staff. I would also submit to you that you will probably get some detail this evening as it relates to recommendations as to what should be included within that landscape plan. Again, those are conditions that this body can place upon the approval, which staff can then take as guidance for when it meets with NCR at a later date and at the appropriate time. Again, devil is in the details. I can't stress that enough and I've been doing this for twenty-some years on both public and private side and so I understand ambiguity is never good. Not having guidance for the city, for city staff, for the developer and for the surrounding property owners is never good. Your ability to place conditions upon any approval is a mechanism to provide that guidance for all three of those entities. The other thing that I would point out is just simply the concerns that you're going to hear from the residents, at least those that are going to follow me directly, are all real invalid concerns. I've met with the residents, the residents have met with the developer. This is an active group of residents. These are real legitimate concerns as it relates to them. While I don't have the entire NCR site plan graphed out, I believe, at least from an eyeball perspective, that this is probably the closest facility that NCR has on its entire site to residential uses. What I mean by that is the clubhouse, the golf course operations, most of those are contained interior to the site. This is on the periphery of the site. Mr. Kylie talked about that and Mr. Grant spoke to that. The site plan speaks to that. So while there is a setback that exceeds the thirty-five-foot requirement of the zoning code, that's not to say that conditions shouldn't be placed upon the operations of that facility. Will there be loudspeakers? Is all traffic going to come up Dogwood and through the existing parking lot? Would there be an existing parking facility specific and dedicated to this proposed use? I don't know. But placing a condition upon that, to limit that, would be a factor that this body could do, which would then help the residents in the surrounding area. So like I said, you're going to hear a variety of testimony. I'm not sitting here telling you what conditions you should or must put into your approval if that's the way this body decides to read. But this is an opportunity, again, for you to provide a roadmap for NCR, the city and the residents as to this development and I would certainly encourage you to take that opportunity, to have your conditions as detailed as possible, again, to limit any ambiguity that's in it. And again, and this is a formal request, I am requesting that you do require NCR to have a performance bond as it relates, at least to the landscaping. I would recommend that that performance bond remain in place to ensure that the landscaping's installed prior to the time of any temporary or permanent occupancy certificate that would be issued for this facility. With that being said, I'll step off the podium and let others speak because I do know that there's five or six people and perhaps more behind me that do have some pertinent information for you and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm William Cash and I live at forty-four oh five Southern Boulevard. I've been a Kettering resident for fifty-six years, forty-four years at my current address. I have the following concerns regarding the NCR conditional use application. I am concerned with the ability for Southern Boulevard to handle additional traffic as there is currently significant commercial traffic associated with NCR's use of Southern Boulevard, which is designated as a residential dead-end street. Every day, both in the morning and afternoon, golf course employees use Southern Boulevard to access the NCR maintenance facility at the south end of Southern Boulevard. Commercial delivery trucks daily use Southern Boulevard to deliver materials and supplies to NCR Golf Maintenance Facility currently. Southern Boulevard is a residential dead-end street and is not designated for moderate or heavy traffic volume. I am not opposed to NCR using its property for golf-related purposes. I am opposed to NCR proposing to access Southern Boulevard for commercial construction and commercial use traffic. Any additional traffic on Southern Boulevard will be detrimental to the residents living on Southern Boulevard. For myself, my wife, and all the residents on Southern Boulevard, south of Stroop Road, I'm asking Kettering Staff and Planning Commission to deny NCR conditional use application for any access to Southern Boulevard during construction and final completion of their proposed practice facility. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cynthia Mezenbrink. I live at forty-three hundred Southern Boulevard. Thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. I have a prepared statement which I'm going to read. So I have the following concerns with the proposal. I also, as Mr. Cash, am not opposed to the NCR using its property for golf-related purposes. I am, however, concerned with the proposed conditional use and its impact on the adjacent and surrounding neighborhoods, my street. If this application is to move forward, I ask, we, my neighbors and I, ask that the Planning Commission please consider the following items and incorporate appropriate conditions in any approval to address these concerns. So with this application, the plans indicate that there's going to be a significant tree clearing along Southern Boulevard and along the east side of the existing driving range. The plan also indicates that netting will be installed at the north end of the driving range and which netting will extend west towards the residences along the east side of Southern Boulevard. Subpoint one, the NCR club has not provided any information in the application as to the scope of the tree clearing, the size, the height, or the style of the netting to be used. Subpoint two, we don't want anything that resembles the top golf facility in Westchester whose netting can be seen from miles away on I-75. And I have a couple of pictures that I want to show and I can hold them up. Where? Oh. Okay, under?
Yeah. I'll show up on the screen.
Oh, okay. Oh. So that's the, oh, okay, that one. And the second one. That's the photo of the Westchester location. Okay, thank you, sir. Subpoint three, the driving range has previously existed with mature, with a mature tree line in place. This natural buffer is now being removed or at a minimum, it is being greatly thinned out and this action is going to expose the driving range to the direct view of the neighbors and thereby making this use more intrusive and will have a detrimental impact on the character of this, of our residential neighborhood. Point two, the NCR club has already commenced with the tree removal on the property in advance of the conditional use application being heard by this Planning Commission. While the club may have the right to do this, it does not negate the requirement that any previously approved conditional use not have a detrimental impact on the character that Mr. Montgomery spoke to of the surrounding neighborhood. So the NCR's decision to take such a tree, such tree clearing action should not excuse NCR from having to take appropriate measures in the safe and prudent operation of the existing driving range, which includes its impact on the adjacent properties. So finally, in the event the Planning Commission decides to approve this conditional use, I ask, we, my neighbors and I, ask that a condition of the approval be included to create a limitation of the removal of trees along our street, Southern Boulevard, similar to like a landscape plan, to be approved by staff with input from us neighbors. And we also ask that the NCR be required to provide information in detail on the location, style, height, color, and materials for the proposed netting to be installed, to be approved by the staff with the intent to mitigate the impact of that netting on our street. And that's all I have. That's the end of my statement. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
I am here with my husband Fred. We have been Kettering residents all of our lives. We live at forty-four forty-five Southern Boulevard. My husband has been a member of the immediate neighborhood that we're talking about all of his life. I am here to discuss lighting. I am not opposed to NCR using this, its property for golf-related purposes. I am concerned, however, with the proposal, conditional use, and its impact on the adjacent and surrounding neighborhoods. If this application is to move forward, I ask that Planning Commission please consider the following and incorporate appropriate conditions in any approval to address these concerns. The conditional use application does not have any information as to the lighting associated with the proposed player development and conference center and adjacent cart parking area. There was not a photometric lighting plan provided with the application or even details as to the type, style, or location of exterior lighting. Given the proposed proximity of this facility to the property line and the fact that Southern Boulevard is an unlighted residential street, the impact of light pollution is a legitimate concern to the neighbors and could easily be a detrimental impact as to the nature and character of the surrounding neighborhood and our property values. Another concern is that there does not appear to be any landscaping, given the absence of a landscaping plan for this facility. The starkness of any lights associated with this commercial facility will have a detrimental impact on our neighborhood. In essence, you are taking what historically has been a unlit driving range, which has a zero light impact, whatever whatsoever after dusk, and replacing that space with a commercial building that is proposed to be not more than it was fifty, now I understand they've moved it to eighty feet from the road. I would request this application be tabled until a photometric light plan and appropriate details of this proposed lighting fixtures be submitted to the city and reviewed by planning staff. I would ask that a condition of that approval be included to require NCR to provide this photometric plan, including the fixture detail for review, and that the neighbors along Southern Boulevard be involved in this process. This is a very special neighborhood. It has been our home for forty-two years. It is impossible to think that this project can proceed and not having an everlasting impact on our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Georgie Wester and my husband Dwight and I live at forty-five fifty-five Southern Boulevard. After looking for nearly ten years for a one-story home in just the perfect setting, we bought this house five years ago, did extensive renovations, and moved in four years ago. We love the openness of the neighborhood, the feel of the quasi-prairie across the street, and the sense of community. We knew when we bought the house that we were across the street from the golf course and we're fine with that. Specifically, we're directly across the street from the pro shop and the clubhouse. We see the NCR grounds crew as they go up and down the cart path to the turf center at the south end of the street seven days a week. We have learned that work on the property can be just as intense in the winter as play on the property can be in the summer. In fact, for two people who don't play golf at all, we know an extraordinary amount about golf course maintenance. Our bedroom looks out at what would be considered the least desirable side of the pro shop. We know when something big is happening because the staff lines the golf carts up and down the side of the building. We know when the Speedway golf outing and the club, the club member guest tournament occur because NCR staff is directed to park all the way up and down the east side of Southern Boulevard on those days. We're not crazy about that, but it's once a year and we play with, roll with the punches. Because the current clubhouse is located at least a hundred and fifty feet back from the street and softened with prairie grasses and mature trees, basic club activities aren't usually all that noticeable. Someone took great care in citing that building, its parking lot, and the ancillary structures to be sure that they were not intrusive on the rest of the neighborhood. And that's what's missing in the information we've been given so far. The building is currently shown as being eighty-two feet from the street, which makes it closer to its neighbors than any other building on the entire NCR property. In addition, it feels out of sync with the setbacks for the houses around it, all of which have a significant setback. The building itself, as you've heard, is eight thousand square feet, almost twice as big as anything else on the street. On paper at least, it feels like Moby Dick is rising out of the driving range and about to move into the neighborhood. In addition, we are seeing only conceptual plans, not actual ones, and we're seeing three of the four sides of the building and frankly, it's that fourth side that we're pretty worried about. Drawings on the NCR Facebook page, can I do this? Show that there's clearly an equipment bay on this fourth side of the building. And the article itself mentions additional uses for the building from outside groups. I can see from my house that the NCR parking lot lights are dimmed about ten PM, but the security light on the south side of the pro shop is on full blast all night for obvious reasons. Will that be the case on the fourth side of this building and how will that affect my neighbors across the street? What kind of road access will there be either from Southern or from the NCR parking lot and golf paths? Will there be parking for staff or maintenance vehicles tucked back behind the building? Out of sight, out of mind for NCR members, but it would be front and center for those of us as residents. The zoning code requires that for a conditional use, the property must conform to the character of the neighborhood and not injure the use and enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity. I don't see how the Planning Commission can approve a conditional use for this project without seeing what the proposed building for that use will look like. Shouldn't you know the materials and colors and then require NCR to build what it said it was going to build? NCR started grading the grading work prior to obtaining a permit, which is, I don't know, in violation of the city's regulations. But if that's the case and this application has yet to be acted upon by the city, then NCR elected to go at risk for such a grading, for such grading work. Just because they took the risk doesn't... Just because they took the risk doesn't mean you have to say it's okay. I would request that this application be tabled until four-sided detailed architectural drawings, including lighting, landscaping, and access for the proposed commercial building, can be provided and reviewed. I believe it's important to determine the impact of this structure on the character of the surrounding neighborhood and its impact on the use and enjoyment of our surrounding properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
My name is Pat McGowan. I live at forty-five, twenty-one, Southern Boulevard. And I'm just one house south of the NCR project. We bought our home about three years ago, and one of the reasons was that it was a dead-end street and not a lot of traffic. I'm not opposed to NCR to golf facility, about the impact in our neighborhood. First of all, I was told it was, according to the conditional use request, an indoor practice facility. Then I've been told it's also a driving range and a convention center. And I don't understand that. The conditional use request states the proposed use would not generate any additional traffic. If so, why is NCR building additional parking spaces? I mean, we had the PGA event here, we had the senior open here, Speedway, and the member guest, and they've never requested any additional parking, but now they are. The other question is, what are the hours? Is this a twenty-four-hour facility? Is it the seven AM to ten PM? We have, I have no idea. And in addition, are there going to be any outdoor speakers for music requests, whatever? And that's concerning, especially when they talk about a convention center. Is it going to have people outside with music? And I think that's all I have to say. But I would like possibly some answers on the hours and what actually is the project? Is it an indoor practice facility, or is it a convention center, or is it both?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess if we can hold on here, maybe we can get some answers quick. So I don't know if you want to come back up and address the hours of operations or some of those items?
How many items? I don't want to address.
I mean, there was a question about additional parking. So I mean, based on the one drawing I see, it looks like there might be additional cart parking near the...
Yes. We're not proposing any additional vehicle parking at this juncture. It's the one drawing Dave just showed.
C dash two point zero.
Yeah. Just more or less a cart path down to cart parking. That's what we're showing there. As you see, the dark area that ties around towards the south, that's the existing cart path that one of the residents talked about runs back towards the maintenance facility. So this is not for vehicles to be parking down there. And I don't know, we've never referenced this as a convention center. You saw the isometric drawing. This is indoor hitting bays that would allow you to hit onto the existing driving range that's there. And that could be done in inclement weather, it'll be heated. They do outdoors on them, so you could close them if it's in the winter, and you could actually have simulation and hit inside each of the bays as well. You also see an indoor putting area. That's what this is. This is called a player development center. You know, it's for practice indoor all year round.
Okay. There was some questions about hours of operations, I mean, similar to what the...
It'd be the same as the clubhouse or the fitness center. I mean, we're not proposing any, you know, it's not a convention center. We're not proposing any major change in usage. And as far as traffic, I mean, at this time, we're not proposing any access to Southern Boulevard. The traffic that's on that street has been on that street since the club was built in nineteen fifty-four. Most of these residents probably bought after the club was already there, and that traffic consists, you know, exists as it is today. You know, with technology, of course, trucks, machines, mowers have all gotten larger. The major use of that street also is Marine Country Club uses that street excessively all day long, running their mowers up and down that street. Because they drive all the way from their clubhouse area all the way down Southern to the maintenance facility for NCR, and then cuts through a gate that is back there that NCR gives them permission to use. So you have unlicensed vehicles all day long driving up and down that road as well. You know, it's not all NCR's traffic here. That, I mean, Marine, we built their golf course, they haul hundreds of dump trucks back through that gate up Southern Boulevard. I caution about trying to get into, put limitations on it. NCR has been a good neighbor, and one resident talked about a perfect setting. It's a perfect setting because NCR is what it is. It's a premium golf course in the country, and it's not going to do anything to detriment that. I mean, we have the senior women's open coming next fall. The last thing we're going to do is try to put a bad product out there. The, let's see...
There was a question about speakers, outdoor speakers with this. Is any...
I would say we'd have anything like a residential house would have, like we have in the clubhouse for ambient noise for music. Again, this is not a convention center, but, you know, people, we have those porches where we would envision you could sit out there, and there's going to be little putting greens around the building, so you could putt. There's no increased traffic here. Again, this is a private club, and it's members only, so we are, you know, we're not asking, you know, building something to bring the masses in. The one picture of the Topgolf, I mean, that's so far from what, you know, we would ever want to do. And that's not, that's not what's there now, nor is it going to be something we're going to try to do. The clearing of the trees, that's been done. We're not clearing anything more. You know, what they see is what's there, and that was only to build a pad for the building, which is, I mean, one of the reasons that we asked to switch the replat was, I mean, this, by all reason, this six-acre parcel along Southern Boulevard could be plotted off in a heartbeat and sold for a considerable sum of money for houses. And that's a permitted use. And those houses could be thirty-five feet off of Southern Boulevard without any input from anyone. So I think that what we're doing is a whole lot better than that, because we're allowing a lot of foliage to stay there. We're going more than twice the required setback away from Southern right away. And we're going to, you know, work with staff to put a serious amount of landscaping in. Just like I would, you know, don't limit access off of Southern for construction. That would be impossible for us to do. There's utilities that have to be tied in. That is our legal right of way. I mean, we have legal property ownership up to Southern, and we can't avoid not accessing Southern at some point.
Sure. Question. Ms. Fisher, you got a question?
I have a question.
Yes.
How many people at any one time do you anticipate will use the driving facility?
How many people at any one time?
Yes, in the building.
In the building or the driving range itself?
No, in the building itself.
I mean, it's going to probably have an occupant load of, you know, several hundred, maybe a hundred and fifty. I mean, you know, the bays themselves, you're not going to get more than a couple of people in a bay, but there could be people waiting, people mingling around the building. I mean, again, it's a, it's a country club function that, you know, during like the Speedway golf outing, it might be a gathering place, you know, in the morning or something. I mean, that's, you know, it's for sure.
But typically, do you anticipate it's a teaching facility?
Yeah. So you're going to have, at most, we have six bays, you know, you might have twelve people if you had a teacher in each bay with a person, and then, so, you know, you might have other people waiting for the next turn, or people inside putting.
So it's not a convention center or a party spot?
No, it's not a convention center. We have a, I mean, that was part of our remodeling last, you know, last year was, we expanded our convention, or our banquet center.
Mr. Schimmel, you had something?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of quick things. First, it's been said a couple of times that it's a members-only place, so that's not going to increase the traffic, which doesn't make sense because you're offering an amenity that doesn't exist now, so people can come there and get in the rain when they wouldn't have been able to come there before to hit outside. So if you say it's not going to increase a significant amount of traffic, I'm okay with that, but no traffic, you're offering something new, you can bring more people in, even though they're members, so...
More members, yes.
Yeah. The second thing I have is, right now, just to clarify, there are no lights on the range, right?
No.
When it gets dark...
Nor is there any proposed.
Okay, when it gets dark, they're done.
Right.
So, but you are accessing the range from inside this building where it is lit. So technically, somebody could stand in the light and just whack out there into the dark. Technically.
Technically, yes.
Okay. Is there going to be any kind of restrictions on that? Or is it, you said the hours would be similar to the pro shop? Is the building...
The club, I mean, the club closes down at dark. You can't be playing, you know, night golf that often.
No, but you could be playing, hitting into a, you know, screen inside a room until...
Right, right.
For as long, that's kind of what I'm asking is...
Yeah, and we're not proposing, like, I mean, we keep the same hours as the club itself. It's going to be utilized in the same parking lot. Parking lot lights are going to be more intrusive to the neighborhood than this building is. We'll have residential lighting on the building, of course, for security purposes. We don't perceive it, you know, being that kind of a facility where it's going to be used twenty-four-seven or something.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
No, it's fine.
Okay. And Mr. Kylie, did you have anything else that you want to address this time? Otherwise, we do have some more people who were...
Yeah, I'm sure. I'll probably be back up.
Could be. Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate it. If we have some additional comments, please come forward.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Kim Zorniger. I live at forty-five oh one with my husband, and we've owned our home for ten years, and we live right across from the project. One thing that I would like to say before I start, what I was going to say is, in this notice, it says that they are going to have a conference center and a meeting area, and I think that that should be taken into consideration when you're considering the conditional use. It's been written right here, creating a meeting and entertainment space, perfect for small corporate events. So I think that should be considered in all of this. I'm not opposed to NCR using its property for golf-related purposes. I am, however, concerned with the proposed conditional use and the impact on the adjacent neighborhoods. I agree with the comments and the suggestions by neighbors so far. I have grave concerns as to the impact of this commercial building on the adjacent neighborhood and the lack of any information for mitigating its impact. I'm a landscape designer by trade, so this is important to me and to the neighborhood, not only as to its location and the setback of NCR's property, but also its operation if the application is moved forward. I ask that the Planning Commission consider the following and incorporate appropriate conditions in any approval to address these concerns. Number one, currently, NCR has not provided any form of landscape plan or planting plan for review and comment. The commercial nature of the building, number two, let alone its size and operation, must be adequately screened from the Southern Boulevard neighborhood. This building could have a major impact on property values. NCR sees it as a positive. We see it as a possible negative to our property values. Number three, as you drive down Southern, the driving range is at the northern end, and it's not visible to a heavily wooded area, which sounds as though they're going to keep that, which is very positive for all of us. As you pass the driving range, the clubhouse and the golf course are not easily visible from Southern Boulevard because of the large landscaped berm with nature, with mature trees, excuse me. Lastly, the clubhouse and the golf facility are set significantly back far from the property line to minimize the impact of the large structure. Great efforts have been made to minimize the impact of golf operations on the surrounding neighborhood. The current proposal for the development center seems to do exactly the opposite, as there's no evidence submitted with the application that attempts to mitigate any impact of this building and its use from the neighbors. With an increased setback of the building in combination with a well-developed landscape plan, the possibility exists to reduce the impact of the building on this neighborhood. I would recommend that the landscape plan include large trees and evergreens and be reviewed by the staff and neighbors prior to any approval of this conditional use application. Industry standard for a landscape project is ten percent of the final cost. In this case, around two hundred thousand dollars for this project. Kettering Medical Center was required to do the same when they added, excuse me, to the east side of Southern with their parking lot, which had a much greater setback from the neighborhood. Neighborhoods matter, and so do trees. I would ask this commission to table the application pending the applicant providing a landscape plan to the city and neighbors review. If the commission moves forward in approving the application, I request the appropriate conditions be included within the approval, and the city require NCR to post appropriate performance bond for the installation and maintenance of this landscaping. I have a few pictures that I'd like to show. These deer live in our neighborhood and would be impacted significantly by a number of things that are happening here. This is what it looked like across the street before they started. This is during construction. This is where they cut all of the trees down, and this is what it currently looks like. That building, on that top of that building, without knowing the height, could be higher than most of the residential houses in the neighborhood. I hope you'll take all of these into consideration, and I thank you for your time.
Do we have anyone else who wishes to come forward and address the commission?
Good evening. My name is Mike Gerhardt. I live at four-four-seven-one Southern Boulevard, actually two houses north of Zorniger's, and I see this project from my backyard, from my bedroom window, and when I walk down the street. At this point in my life, I really do not like change. I'm a member of NCR Country Club, and when this change came about, I approached Mr. Grant and asked him to give me an overview of it. He was kind enough to share some renderings. I had the same objection when they built the pool house, and they shared those with me when that was built. Based upon the information that was shared, I think NCR Country Club has done a very good job of trying to be consistent with what they've done and what they've built in the past. Architecturally, it looks like it's going to match, it's going to be a similar brick style, so I think that that is very good for the neighborhood. I've lived in the house twenty-two years. We were concerned about traffic when we moved in. Other than certain periods of time, I have not seen an appreciable amount of traffic on the road. I will admit that there has been a bit more with the construction of this project. But two years ago, I lived through Miller Pipeline tearing up the street for a considerable length of time, putting a new gas line. So we survived that, and I do think that this project will, as Mr. Grant had recommended, will be resolved in a very timely manner. They've got an interest in doing so. With respect to a couple of the concerns that the neighbors have, I likewise have a couple of concerns. I like trees. Unfortunately, my backyard's on Marine Country Club, and I think they took about two thousand trees out of that over the last few years, and they did not ask me about tearing those out. did not ask me about tearing those out. Thirty of them came out directly by my house. Uh, but I do think, uh, putting some trees in, uh, once the, uh, construction is complete would be a benefit, uh, to the neighborhood, and I think that that would, uh, really provide a nice finishing touch, uh, on that project, so I'm in favor of it. I've spent some time talking to people, uh, looking at it. NCR's been there, uh, 67 years now, I think they are, uh, a, a very good citizen, I think they've demonstrated that over the years. Uh, I think it's good for the Dayton community, the Kettering community, uh, and I'd like to see it continue to, uh, to expand, uh, and thrive, uh, into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Bill Pardue. My wife Janet and I have lived on Southern Boulevard, 4406, for more than 20 years, and been members of NCR Country Club for more than 20 years, and I want to thank you for the opportunity for you to hear from our neighbors tonight on what our concerns are. Uh, my wife Janet and I support the petition fully. I do want to note that NCR, in our view, over a couple of decades, have gone from being a good club to being a great club, and it's an asset in many ways to the community, but I think that the way this project has proceeded, what has been shared and not been shared, has not been appropriate. I think the idea of addressing the questions that our neighbors have raised tonight is a really good one, and to put this aside for 30 days, I think it was proposed, makes good sense. I'm particularly concerned about the apparent conflict between what was given as promotional literature, saying it's going to be used for business meetings, and what we heard tonight, which was different, was it strictly a golf practice facility, which is it? Um, I do want to thank NCR for the progress they've made in the last week or so, listening to the neighbors, and I hope now, moving forward, they will be a good neighbor as we address and get this settled and resolved and continue the discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the, uh, commission? All right, um, comments from commissioners, questions? Yeah, so, yes, David or Tom, just in terms of what we're doing here tonight?
Uh, sure, so, uh, with any conditional use approval, um, changes to that become an amendment. Uh, amendments are subject to planning commission review and approval against the same original criteria. Um, the purpose of the public hearing is to, uh, have residents share their concerns, make sure that we have heard their, their concerns, and that if there are any potential negative impacts stemming from the development, that we, um, have the ability to impose any conditions that will mitigate those potential negative impacts. Those conditions are, are your prerogative, uh, to how you want to apply those. Uh, if you want to apply any additional standards over and above what the normal zoning code would, would apply, um, to, to address those concerns. Um, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I believe so, and I guess one, one other item here in terms of, uh, you know, lighting's been brought up, and obviously landscaping, so, I mean, we do have minimums within the code that need to be addressed, so I don't know if you could sort of outline what those are and what staff will sort of use as the, the minimum.
Sure.
Benchmark for...
Sure. So anytime we receive a, an application for development, uh, to, to secure a, a building permit, uh, there are certain standards that have to be met, that we put, uh, every application, we review them against those standards. Uh, we have setbacks and height restrictions, those are considered bulk regulations, um, deal with more of like the, the big stuff. Uh, then we have a more specific development, uh, criteria, and that gets into more of the construction detail type stuff. We, we look at the architecture, uh, we have architectural standards for, for the city of Kettering, uh, we have, where we regulate materials, we regulate, um, uh, a lot of different aspects of, of design, uh, we have minimum design elements that have to be incorporated. Uh, we have landscaping requirements, where we regulate, uh, foundation landscaping that goes around buildings, we regulate streetscape, um, plantings, we regulate parking vehicular screening, um, we have, so there's various standards that are in there. Uh, we also regulate lighting, uh, there is a minimum standards that have to be met for that, but, uh, specific to this is, we do not allow any light trespass, light cannot trespass across property lines, uh, nothing is allowed to be, have glare, um, so everything has to be what's considered a dark sky compliant, uh, so there's no light pollution. Um, that's with any new development, obviously, there are situations that are in Kettering that don't comply with that, but anything new or going forward does have to comply with those standards. We also have, um, regulations for, uh, site access, um, construction hours, um, things like that, uh, so there's, there's a lot of fine granular detail that gets reviewed anytime a construction project does come in, uh, and we, we take that very seriously, and we want to make sure that every project and every application, uh, is reviewed for compliance before we issue a building permit.
And a lot of this is different from what it had been historically in the past, we were doing...
Correct.
Um, PUDs and other types of things where basically we're re-sort of rewriting a very specific code for that particular project. Um, was not very, um, owner-friendly, uh, they weren't knowing what they were getting into, uh, when we revised the code, it is all, it's spelled out, so anybody who is looking to do any development can see in the code what it is that they will need to do before they can get a, a, a building permit and, and to move forward. So, um, you know, if people are wondering like, well, why aren't we asking for this? It's like, well, we've, uh, spent the time reworking the code to make sure that we are going to, again, on behalf of, uh, you know, this commission, which is then on behalf of the city of Kettering and all of its residents, that, uh, you know, we can maintain those high level of standards in, in development, so, uh, uh, so that's just sort of a, a little bit of a basis why, you know, how did this get to where we are? Well, this is sort of the process that we do have now, so. Yep?
Um, Mr. Rol, just a couple things, so the landscaping really is part of the next step in general, and we have minimum standards that are in the code, but conditionally, we can require higher standards than that based on whatever, and that's, I think it was recommended by city staff was...
Yes.
To go above and beyond what the code, code is actually, um, calling for. The one thing that's come up a number of times, um, tonight is a performance bond, so I don't know if there's, what the concern level is about NCR completing this project or the landscaping. Are performance bonds, is it something the city uses regularly, on, only on occasion in particular? So can you explain for those who don't know what a performance bond is and what it's intended to do? Can you, can you go over that for us?
Sure, I'll be happy to answer that. Uh, performance bonds are, uh, basically a monetary security in favor of the city so that in the event, um, a particular developer doesn't perform or finish a project, we can take that money and finish it. Typically, it's used for, like in subdivisions, uh, we would require a performance bond for the road improvements, so that, um, as a developer is building a subdivision, they'll, they'll build a, a road, but they won't finish it until all the houses are built, then, when all the houses are built, they'll put the finishing touches on, um, that way it's not crushed and, and destroyed before the project's done. Um, if they don't build it in, we take that performance bond and finish that road. For landscaping, we can certainly require that, uh, but typically in the past, what we have done is require a, um, a compliance agreement, uh, and that is outlined in the code as well, that, uh, as a, uh, condition of approval, you can require a compliance agreement. We do that on a regular basis anyways, when, particularly for landscaping, if it is, the project is being done, finished in the, uh, heart of winter, you're not going to be putting in landscaping then, so we require a compliance agreement that first thing in the spring, that landscaping gets put in. We won't sign off on the final occupancy until that's actually done, but we'll give temporary occupancy during that period of time. So in this case, um, if it's a concern, we could require a compliance agreement that, that landscaping be, um, installed before the, um, prior, prior to finishing the project, prior to final occupancy, whatever you, you would feel is most appropriate.
Sorry, I'm just taking notes here. All right, I, then I do, Mr. Kylie, hate to draw you back up here, but if you could come up on, on this issue, um, would you have any problem with some sort of compliance agreement language being a condition for our approval?
I don't foresee that, I, I think a performance bond would be unnecessary, I think if there's a, a vehicle already in the code, that, that seems like that would be the easiest for the planning commission to reference and for us to agree to, I mean, we're, you know, like, I don't think we've waived it at all tonight on wanting to do a quality project, um, I mean, there was terms used about developers, and that's, you know, we don't just do country club work, I mean, yeah, there are developers, they don't have any skin in the game, they're there to build it and leave. NCR is not leaving, they're staying here, they're not going to walk away from this half-finished, they're going to do it first rate like they've done everything on that property, and so compliance agreement would be, I don't see that being an issue when we submit, you know, and working with staff to, to come up, I know David talked with me about the language that, you know, recommendation of, uh, because we're, you know, I think the landscaping requirements as they are, per the code, are very minimal. That's not our goal, we're not going to do that, um, and so we would work with David to make sure we do something that's going to look nice and screen the neighbors as much as, you know, from, you know, us from them as much as them from us.
All right, so, um, thank you. So, uh, Mr. Robler, if we were to include a compliance agreement or language there as part of that landscaping recommended, so we would just require a compliance agreement, landscaping be installed before what?
I would say prior to final occupancy.
Okay.
And just to kind of, uh, make a little bit clear, you know, the difference between, say, a compliance agreement and performance bond, yes, a performance bond, we have the money in hand and we can go finish a project. Uh, compliance agreement, um, it's much easier to administer on our part, which is neither here nor there, but the, um, the enforcement of that could take longer, but it is still just as strong. So for instance, if someone violates their compliance agreement, um, it's a formal agreement between the city and the property owner, and we can take that, uh, through our enforcement procedures and to the courts to enforce. Um, it can take a little bit longer, but it is no more or less effective.
Okay, that's all I have at this particular moment.
Do you have anything else? At this point, I think, uh, members of commissions have sort of, uh, you know, like, I guess, you know, we, we've heard from staff, we've heard from the applicant, uh, we've heard from concerned neighbors, uh, this is still a public hearing, if, uh, anybody in the neighborhood has any additional comments or concerns that you'd like to address, I'd, you know, ask that you come forward now, otherwise I think we'll, uh, uh, we're going to look to, uh, to act on this, I would believe, so. Right. So at this point in time, recommendation, then, close public hearing?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Rethman. Uh, I do have two conditions, uh, that we are recommending as part of an approval, uh, this evening, uh, and I'll get to those in just a second. I, uh, we've also crafted a few more while we've been here during the meeting that we think are, are appropriate, uh, conditions as well. I don't have precise language on those, but I, I, I would like to share those with you, or, or Tom actually has a list in front of him, I think he might address those. Um, but formal recommendation is, is that based upon the evidence presented and the analysis and findings made within the staff report, staff recommends that the request for approval of a conditional use amendment for the property located at 4435 Dogwood Trail be approved with the following conditions. Number one, additional landscape shall be placed to the west of the practice facility to soften the view of neighboring properties to the west. Uh, such landscaping shall be provided in quantity and location to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator. Uh, condition two, any new nets utilized as part of the driving range facility shall be located in existing net locations and shall not exceed the height of the adjacent tree line by more than 10% of the total tree line height. Uh, such netting shall be designed to blend into the existing landscape to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator. Uh, those are the two conditions that we had in the staff report, uh, I think Tom has some additional ones, uh, that we'd like to add.
Uh, listening to the, uh, audience tonight, a couple of things, um, stood out, just to make sure, basically taking Mr. Montgomery's, uh, direction, that the more specific we can get, the, the better so that both sides understand, but it is requiring that no outside speakers be permitted on the exterior of the building. Inside is fine, um, and that no exterior lights be, be placed on the west elevation of the building, which would be facing the Southern Boulevard. Typically, lights are at the entrances and, um, at the driving range, there's going to be, uh, lights, but facing the neighbors to the west, we would say, uh, recommend no exterior lights. And that's all I have right now.
Um, if, from the applicant's standpoint, I mean, you've heard the additional, um, okay?
Can I just address one condition, that is in regards to the netting? And I believe the language that you cited was that there would be no additional netting added other than just where the existing netting is. Um, my understanding from Jeff Grant is they were planning on adding some additional netting to the northeast section, the bottom part of the, of the driving range, we have neighbors right there, they get some balls in their yard, this would be better protection for them if they do add that additional netting to the east, it's basically the northeast corner, uh, of the, the bottom of the driving range, so, um, if you would just so note that place.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, it was one of the items I wanted to address, so, um, I didn't see that in the language, David, originally, but we are going to extend to the east of the, the northeast as, as they, you just mentioned, um, we have no issue with keeping it, we, we don't want this to go above the tree line, I mean, going 10% above the trees is what, uh, the staff is recommending, we wouldn't even like to do that, I mean, we're, we, what we're proposing would not exceed the tree line at this juncture, um, the trees to the east, there's, there's quite a bit of foliage there, so the additional nets would be just like they are now, they're hardly even visible, especially in the summer. Um, we originally did propose to the west, having a net near that one house that's at the northwest corner, speaking with that property owner, he would prefer not to, so, uh, you know, unless we start getting phone calls later, then we'd have to rethink it. We, we planned on it, but we do, again, we're trying to be good neighbors, we, uh, actually worked with him to help plant some trees along his property line, allowing him access to the, to the golf course to do that, um, and, and so, at this point, we'd like to grant his wishes and not put nets there, but I, you know, if it so deems itself necessary in a year or two, we would have to, you know, rethink that. Um, I do have a problem with saying that we want this building to be, uh, in character with the neighborhood, but yet we're going to now start putting stipulations on it, I, I think saying that we can't have lights to the west would make this building less character, I mean, the, the houses along Southern have lights on them, we want this to have a residential feel, plus, we do want this to be secure, there are, there has been vandalism at the club at times from kids, and light is a great deterrent of that, now we're not talking about putting up a, a... Now, we're not talking about putting up a neon, you know, light show here. We're just saying minimal lights around the building for proper security, at night especially. Speakers, like I said, I think some speakers in the soffits of the patios, for people to be able to sit out there in the rocking chairs like we have around the club, or at our end dock chairs, I don't see that as being obtrusive, especially once the landscaping gets put in. I think, again, we're not limiting the neighbors on, you know, the houses on Southern don't have limits on them on having speakers on their houses. Now, we're not having, you know, big parties here that are going to, you know, big blaring speakers. We're just talking for ambient, ambient noise. Those would be stipulations, I think, that would not be, it'd be difficult to enforce long-term, and it would not be in character with the existing neighborhood.
Thank you. You think we're good?
Chair, I suggest that commissioners weigh in on the suggested speakers and the lights, since we've got kind of opposing views out there a little bit, that we should probably let our stance be known individually.
I think it's reasonable to have security lights. I don't think that there needs, you know, it doesn't sound that's unreasonable.
Yeah, no. I agree with the lights in terms of, you know, whether it's soffit lights or whatever, but something that's residential and...
Right, I agree with the lights too, because we do have regulations that it can't really bleed over. So, to have, you know, some security lighting, especially if they end up with a door on that side, since we don't have final drawings at this point. We don't know exactly what it will be. I'm okay with the lights, which leaves the speakers.
Yeah. Can, Mr. Kiley, can you, and if we can pull up the CE 3.0, the plan, and in terms of where there was proposed outdoor seating? Is it on the east side?
Beyond the south and east. That's where we have patios currently.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's that... Yeah.
Yeah, so we have like those covered porch areas where we would perceive people being able to gather. Have a putting green out there. Again, this is not a top golf.
Right, yes. And I guess, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to some, you know, if it's soffit speakers or something playing.
I'm sure there's a sound ordinance about decibel level at the property line even. Just like we have with lighting.
That's where I was going to go, is, I mean, it makes sense if something, you know, not if you're setting up a band to play or something, wouldn't be for that. But some soffit speakers, just to, you know, for some ambient music, I think. Most of that, especially the east side, is far from residence. And same with the south, so. And we do have noise ordinances if it gets too loud. So, I'd be okay with not including the speakers as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kiley. All right, so, if no one else says, wishes to address the commission at this point, I would like to...
Nope.
You caught me just in the nick of time. That's why I keep sort of asking, does anybody else wish to come forward, so?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Dave Montgomery with Pickle Chaffern Ewing, 2700 Kettering, or not Kettering Tower, Stratocash Tower now, Dayton, Ohio. A couple of questions. One, I guess, is going to be on the performance guarantee slash, I forget, Tom, what you called it?
Compliance agreement.
The compliance agreement. I didn't hear where there was a condition of that, although that was an item that seemed to have a little bit of traction.
I think we're going to include that in the first. It wasn't what David had read, but I think Mr. Schuman is going to read the motion.
Okay, I'd know if the commission had other conditions that might be coming forward.
Yeah, we didn't each weigh in on it, but I think everybody kind of agreed that we... So, it is, it is in my current, and I say current because things change. It's in my current recommendation.
Fair enough. The, I mean, I guess part of the other concern, and really, we haven't really spoken about this all that much, but Mr. Kiley did just address it, and that is this whole patio feature on the southeast corner, right? So, so by NCR's own Facebook page, you've seen copies of that presented to you this evening. It does talk about this being a conference center. It does talk about this being a player facility. You then have contradictory evidence from NCR saying it's only a player development center, and it will only be golf. So, I guess one of my paramount questions to you guys is, what is the use of this facility, and what is the conditional use that is being approved? Is it just a player golf-only facility? Whoops, sorry. Will there be a conference center associated with it? I mean, I do think that that is a paramount and fundamental question to which, again, appears to be contradiction by NCR itself. And I'm not trying to sound the alarm, but I do think that is something that should be addressed. I would also suggest to this commission, and I know we've talked about the minimum standards that are in the zoning code, you guys have the ability to go above and beyond what the minimum standards are, and that's really what I was speaking to at the beginning, right? So, if there is a landscape requirement in your code, why can we not get detailed conditions, if you will, as it relates to what is above and beyond for requirement purposes? Same thing that it goes to elevations. We're not sitting here, and again, now I'm speaking for the residents, but there was no testimony that was presented to you today that, again, talked about the materials of the facility, right? I mean, I believe the residents trust staff to say, hey, this is going to be in compliance with what currently exists at NCR. I think NCR, to its credit, doesn't want to have this outcropping of a building that contradicts what its overall master plan looks like. I mean, that doesn't really make sense for anyone. But I do think that there are conditions, again, hours of operation. NCR Country Club operates well past dark. I've been there, and most anyone who's attended an NCR event has been there past dark. Mr. Kiley stood up and said this would close at dusk. It's not unreasonable for this commission to place hours of operation on this facility. And if it goes beyond dusk, that's fine. But if you have 200 people at an event seven days a week, or five days a week, and more, when you have large events, which NCR consistently has on a regular basis, those kinds of measures are quite likely not addressed by the minimum standards of your zoning regulation. And again, I think that this commission has the unique opportunity to address those by placing detailed conditions on it. I'm not trying to make this a PUD, as you guys discussed. I'm not trying to make this where there's, you know, 98 conditions as it relates in every ounce of minute detail. But I do think that there are significant issues that likely require something more, or at least greater verbiage, than what the minimum standards are within your zoning code. And again, on behalf of myself and the other people that spoke tonight, I would encourage this commission to entertain that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kiley, can you address the materiality of the building, since it seems to be a hot button right now?
So, I mean, the materiality of the building, as far as the actual...
Terms that we've seen there, part of the application had renderings. It appears that it's brick and...
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, as Mr. Montgomery, I mean, we would not be like putting up a vinyl siding building here that looks like a trailer park. We would stay with the same architecture as the fitness center that we did 22 years ago. We'd stay with the same architecture as the club that was built in the early 90s. We would never want to deviate from that. We'd, you know, the same classical columns, the brick veneer, the same window styles with mullions, you know, the same characteristics as the club itself. That's, I mean, staff, I know, I mean, it sounds like the neighbors aren't concerned too much about that. We provided this, which technically wasn't even necessary for the conditional use hearing, because we're trying to show, hey, we're doing a quality project here. And it's going to, you know, spill out into the landscaping as well. Why would we stop there? Why would, you know, nothing about the club has ever cut corners, especially in the last several years. It's been prospering and doing quite well. And I think that's shown in everything they've been doing to the course and to the surrounding facilities. The, you know, there is a meeting room in that. I mean, what country club wouldn't have that? I mean, I have a meeting room in my own office. That doesn't make it a conference center. So, I wasn't trying to mislead the commission by any stretch. It's, you know, it's not, you know, it's like, I think, a 10-person table, not a conference center, where we're going to have exhibitors and all kinds of stuff like that going on here.
Okay.
That address, hopefully.
Well, that's why I'd ask the size of the facility and what you plan to do, and how many people plan to be there.
Okay. And at the end of the day, the building code's going to look at the space, and, you know, a putting green area is kind of an open space without any real defined, so the building code does increase that. That's why I didn't mean to alarm you with that large number, but as Mr. Rathman probably knows, I mean, it's...
Your calculated building or occupant load in many cases far exceeds whatever your actual use is.
Correct, just because of the nature of...
And those calculated occupant loads are used, then, for calculating sizes of doorways and toilets and things like that. So, having extra exiting, extra toilets is good, but that doesn't mean people are going to be that many people in there, so.
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No.
I don't think so.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right, if not, we had heard the recommendation from staff. At this point, I will, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Yes. All right, Mr. Schuman, I believe you have a motion?
I do, Mr. Chair. This is for 4435 Dogwood Trail Conditional Use Amendment. Whereas an application has been received from Donald Kiley of KNA Architecture, 135 West Dorothy Lane, Suite 200, Kettering, Ohio, requesting approval of a conditional use amendment to allow a new indoor practice facility at NCR Country Club located on the western end of the existing driving range near Southern Boulevard. And whereas the planning commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein, and held a hearing on August 16, 2021. And whereas this request constitutes approval of a conditional use amendment to allow a new indoor practice facility at NCR Country Club located at 4435 Dogwood Trail, and whereas the planning commission adopts the findings fact presented by staff in their staff report, which is incorporated into this motion, I move that the applicant's request for approve, approval of a conditional use amendment, as depicted on Exhibit 1 within the staff report, to allow a new indoor practice facility at NCR Country Club located at 4435 Dogwood Trail be approved with the following conditions. Number one, that additional landscaping shall be placed to the west of the practice facility to soften the view of neighboring properties to the west. Such landscaping shall be provided in a quantity and location to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator. In addition, that a compliance agreement that requires landscaping to be installed prior to the final occupancy be required. Number two, any new nets utilized as part of the driving facility shall not exceed the height of adjacent tree line by more than 10% of the total tree height. Such netting shall be designed to blend into existing landscape to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator, and location of any new nets need to be approved by the zoning administrator. End of motion.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Yes.
All right. Next item on the agenda, which formerly was item number two, is 4435 Dogwood Trail. It is a lot consolidation. It is PC-21-012. Mr. Robler?
Thank you, Mr. Rathman. We have received an application for a lot consolidation approval at the property of the NCR Country Club, which is 4435 Dogwood Trail. The applicant is requesting approval to consolidate five lots located at 4435 Dogwood Trail into a single new 27.617-acre lot. The site is currently developed and occupied by NCR Country Club. We have reviewed the proposal in accordance with the City of Kettering subdivision ordinance, and the proposed plat has been prepared in compliance, with a few notable exceptions. We did find that there is an existing 12-foot-wide water easement that traverses the site. We do feel that that easement needs to be added to the plat drawing. Any other known easements also should be shown accordingly. Additionally, as noted within the plat checklist, the drawing needs to be sealed by the surveyor prior to planning commission signature. We are recommending approval, and we do have two conditions as part of that recommendation, that any existing easements be added, and that also the plat drawing be sealed by the surveyor prior to signature by the planning commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Robler, Ms. Fisher, Mr. Schuman? I have no questions. I believe this is not a public hearing, but this is... Yeah, but it's, if anyone does have any questions or comments that you feel like you can, would like to address, then feel free to come forward. All right, seeing as no one wishes to come forward, we have the recommendation. So, I believe, Ms. Fisher, you have a motion.
I have the motion. Whereas an application has been received from Donald Kiley of KNA Architecture, 135 West Dorothy Lane, Suite 200, Kettering, Ohio, requesting approval of a record plan that would create a new 27.617-acre lot from five smaller parcels. And whereas this request constitutes approval of a final record plan for the newly described lot. And whereas the planning commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein, I move that the applicant's request for approval of a final record plan for NCR Country Club be approved with the following conditions, which shall be completed prior to signatures by the planning commission. One, any existing easements be added. Two, the plat drawing will be sealed by the surveyor. End of motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Yes.
All right. Next item on the agenda, item number four, 2600 Wilmington Pike. It is conditional use. It is PC-21-014, and it is a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Rathman.
Do that, or we want to slow roll here while the crowd disperses a little bit?
Sure, sure.
All right. Take it away, Mr. Robler.
Certainly. We are in receipt of an application seeking conditional use approval at 2600 Wilmington Pike, the former home of Sixa. They are seeking approval of animal care, grooming, and kenneling as permitted uses within the existing development there. Proposed uses are listed in Section 113502.3. As conditionally permitted uses within the B Business District, conditional uses do require planning commission approval. So, that's why we're here tonight. Section 11370513B states that kennel uses must be at least 50 feet from residentially-used property. The existing structure right now is only located 25 feet from that eastern property boundary that's shared with the adjoining residents. The solution, as we see it, is to ensure that kenneling activities do not encroach any closer than 50 feet within the building, and so, we would be limiting those to the west.
Uh, and so we would be limiting those to the west end of the structure at least fifty feet from the east property boundary. Uh, we have prevered, prepared a review summary, uh, with, uh, Section eleven fifty-three oh-eight that we reviewed, uh, the application against. And we are prepared to go through that, um, uh, that list of approval criteria. Uh, we did include a review of that within the staff report, uh, for a planning commission's, uh, review and analysis, uh, but we are prepared to go through that if you, if you choose to do so.
All right.
All right.
We're here.
Okay. So, uh, Section A, uh, the proposed conditional use shall comply with all applicable regulations of the zoning code. Uh, the, uh, site and the proposed use are compliant and only require this conditional use approval to move forward with occupancy. Uh, so this requirement is satisfied. Section B, the proposed conditional use shall conform to the character of the neighborhood within the same zoning district in which it is located and shall have no more adverse effects on health, safety, or comfort of persons living or working in the neighborhood, or shall be no more injurious to property or improvements in the neighborhood than would any other use permitted by right within the same district. The proposed uses, uh, would occupy an existing facility that was previously housing virtually the same uses. Uh, neighboring properties are largely commercial. Uh, the proposed uses are no more intense than those already existing nearby. Uh, this requirement is satisfied. Subsection C, adequate utilities be provided. Again, there's no, no utilities being proposed as part of this, uh, so therefore this requirement is also met. Uh, D, adequate measures shall be taken to provide ingress and egress to so designed as to prevent traffic hazards and to prevent traffic congestion on the public roads. Uh, this is an existing facility. Uh, this would just basically be a refreshing this facility with a, with a use that was already designed to, to handle this use. Uh, so there would be no additional traffic standards that would need to be, uh, complied with, so this standard is met. Uh, subsection E, the proposed use shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of vibration, noise, odor, dust, smoke, or gas. Uh, the proposed use would not be generating vibration, noise, dust, smoke, or gas. Um, there is the, the, uh, I mean, there are pets that could be there, that, and so noise and odor are something that, that people may find objectionable. However, our zoning code does regulate this activity. Uh, we do require soundproofing, and there are, uh, mechanical systems in place to make sure that the, um, any odor is taken care of, uh, and compliance with those standards is mandatory. Uh, so this isn't something that we would be regulating here tonight. Uh, so this requirement is satisfied. Subsection F, uh, the proposed use shall not injure the use and enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish or impair the property values within the neighborhood. Just a short time ago, this was Sixa. So this is basically, again, this is just a refreshing of, of the, of the use that used to be there. Uh, the only reason that this needs to come here tonight is that, um, the building has been vacant for longer than six months, so after six months goes by, we consider anything that comes in to be a new use. So that's why we're here tonight. Uh, in effect, that there would be virtually no change, um, because of that. Uh, this requirement is satisfied. Uh, subsection G, the proposed use shall not impede the orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted within the zoning district. Uh, proposed use will have no such effect. This requirement's satisfied. Subsection H, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the proposed use shall not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Again, no such detrimental effects. This requirement's met. Finally, subsection I, the public interest and welfare supporting the proposed use shall, shall be sufficient to outweigh the individual interests that are adversely affected by the establishment of the proposed use. Uh, again, the proposed use will have no such adverse effects that must be outweighed, so this requirement is also met. Uh, that concludes our analysis of, uh, the criteria. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Rollor? All right. This is a public hearing. If the applicant wishes to address the commission, we welcome you. It's not required, but we love to hear from people.
My name is Monica Roddy, and I live at twenty-five twenty Flowerstone Drive, uh, Dayton, Ohio, four-five-four-four-nine. Um, this has just been a dream of ours, and we thank you for hearing us, and our architect would like to come up and talk to you.
Sure, yeah. Great.
All right, thank you.
Mike Taylor, uh, Vice President, Pinnacle Archi- Pinnacle Architects, four-eighty Vantage Point, Miami'sburg, Ohio. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Robillard, Miss, Mrs., um, Shrimp for their guidance as a conditional use. It gets a little tricky. Uh, it, of course, is, uh, an approved use in, in the district, zoning district it currently resides. The only issue that we have, if you go back to Sixa, the, I'm not sure if the zoning, well, Mr. Robillard says the zoning code was still the same. They are twenty-five feet away from the house adjacent. Uh, they must not have had a restriction to having kennels only fifty feet away from the property line. Uh, we, we kinda agreed with Mr. Robillard when we had our original meeting that if you read the conditional uses in eleven thirty-seven oh-five thirteen, it, it seems to imply you should be fifty feet away because you could have kennels outdoors, or you should be indoors. These are all indoors. There's, Sixa had soundproof walls and kennel areas. Monica and Tabitha are fired up, young, new entrepreneurs. We applaud that in the United States. I would hate to tie their hands and say you can only use certain portions of your building for housing kennels. Uh, I, I think they are fine with that, as we agreed with Mr. Robillard now. Uh, but he, he did mention potentially we could make, uh, either as us, as the applicant, or planning staff can make, uh, an, uh, a motion, or not a motion, a request to change the zoning code fifty feet away or indoors, not and. Uh, but, you know, as they're starting out, they don't need that entire building. It's a big building. It, uh, it was always used the whole building for that whole use. There, to our knowledge, and there was a, a letter of approval from Sixa for this project. They still own the property. But they, they're in full approval, and, and to their knowledge, and I think staff's knowledge, there's never been a complaint at this building. I would think that would be what planning commission would be worried about for the fifty feet. If there are complaints, uh, I know, knowing Monica personally, she, she would address them, and she would take care of them. But other than that, we, we thank the staff, and, uh, we agree with their recommendation. Thank you.
Okay.
I do have just one question, since there was a little confusion on that. And it, it sounds like they don't need to worry about the kenneling at this point. It's been a while since I've been in Sixa. That was a dog or two ago. Um, I don't remember the exact layout. I don't know if kennels are actually on that end that we're discussing. Uh, but my question doesn't even relate to that. What it relates to is if they're acceptable into, you know, staying away from that part as far as, and kenneling, I assume, just means like overnight or housing them. They could still, they could still do functions down at that end, just not house the dog. Is that my understanding correct?
Yes, that, that is correct. Kenneling is, is, is a, by definition, is overnight stays of, of, you know, of pets and animals. So, as long as you stay fifty feet away, which would basically be twenty-five feet in the, the last bit of the building, that would satisfy that. So you could do kenneling throughout the rest of the building.
Throughout the rest, just not in that first?
In that first twenty-five feet, yeah, correct. And, and just to ma- make sure that we're clear, that is a standard for that specific use that's within that section, um, which we do not have the ability to waive. Um, that's something that would be, that we could either propose an amendment to the zoning code to address that, or it'd be something that the BZA would have to address as a variance, uh, request. So they would have, you know, they'd have to meet the standards for practical difficulty in order to do that, but for us to, to basically approve that, we would just be saying, reiterating that, that yes, that rule still applies until it doesn't.
Right. Yeah, that's, so that's where I was heading, is just what would be the steps if it gets to the point where they really need that space for that particular use within that particular building for which we are discussing.
And it, uh, we did discuss that particular situation. Originally, the, it was the intent of the zoning code to prevent, um, primarily noise, but odor, intrusion onto next-door neighbor, particularly residential properties. Noise being the big factor. In this particular situation, there's a full wall, uh, there, and there's no outside kennels in that location, so it's kind of one of those particular conditions at this particular location that doesn't make a, you know, doesn't necessarily apply, except the rules are still there. So, uh, my proposal was when we go through our next zoning code amendment to clean things up and kind of an omnibus proposal, we might clean that up a little bit to say.
Clarify it.
To clarify that.
So it does exactly what we want.
If there's a full wall there with no, uh, openings, then that would be okay.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to address the commission? If so, now's your opportunity. All right, uh, do we hear a recommendation right? Recommendation?
Sure thing. Based upon the evidence presented and the analysis and findings made within the staff report, staff recommends that the, that the request for conditional use approval for the property located at twenty-six-hundred Wilmington Pike be approved with the following condition. One, kenneling shall not occur or occupy any part of the building within the required fifty-foot setback from the neighboring residential property. That's the it.
All right, um, unless commissioners have any comments here, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Schimmern?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Yes. Ms. Fisher, I believe you have a motion.
I do have a motion. Um, whereas an application has been received from Monica Roddy and Tabitha Roberts of genuine pet care, requesting conditional use approval to allow animal care, grooming, and kennel as permitted uses at twenty-six-hundred Wilmington Pike. And whereas the Planning Commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by staff, which is incorporated herein, and held a hearing on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. And whereas this request constitutes conditional use approval to allow animal care, grooming, and kennel as permitted uses at twenty-six-hundred Wilmington Pike. And whereas the Planning Commission adopts the findings of fact presented by staff in their staff report, which is incorporated herein, I move that the applicant's request for conditional use approval to allow animal care, grooming, and kennel as permitted uses at twenty-six-hundred Wilmington Pike be approved with the following condition. One, kenneling shall not occur or occupy any part of the building within the fifty-foot setback from the neighborhood, neighboring residential property. End of motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Schimmern?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Yes. Good luck. All right. All right. Next item on the agenda, item number five, is audience participation. For items not on the agenda, so if anyone out there has anything they'd like to, uh, bring before the commission, now is your opportunity. Seeing as none, you, you're all welcome to, to head out. That is fine. Uh, we will, uh, move on to other business, signing of plats.
Uh, we do not have any plats to sign this evening.
Communications and reports.
Uh, just one, at the beginning of the meeting, I handed out a Planning and Development Department update. Maybe just a few things to highlight in that, um, three-page document. Next time, I'll probably make it a little bit shorter, but, um, one is to let you know about Life Connections in the Miami Valley Research Park. This is a new twenty-eight thousand square foot, two-story building uh, at the corner of Woodman and Research Boulevard. And it's gonna be a very nice-looking building right at the, uh, gateway to the research park. So we're excited about that. Right next door to that, Resnetix is planning on a major expansion to their business, just a little bit, uh, west of their current facility. Uh, and other Planning and Development Department news, uh, we are in the interview process for the new city planner to replace our esteemed Mr. Hunt. Uh, so I'm very excited about that. We had about forty-six applicants. Most all of them were all qualified for the position. Um, and about half were very, very qualified for the position. So it was a very difficult decision to, uh, weed those down, but we are on the cusp of, uh, getting a new city planner, so I'm excited about that. Next time, we probably can announce who it is.
Awesome.
And then, uh, lastly, this is a little bit, uh, uh, different and unique in our department. Not necessarily unique, but, uh, responding to a, uh, existing need in the community. As you may have recalled, I don't know, about a month or two ago, there was an article in the newspaper about a particular Kettering resident that was being evicted from his, uh, apartment. And the, the article was primarily geared towards him not receiving, um, benefits that he may or may not have been entitled to. It rang a couple bells for us. We looked into things. In that particular situation, um, there were some more, uh, extenuating circumstances, but it got us to thinking that there is a lot of, uh, particular funds right now available through the COVID relief plans that would allow us to assist those residents. Most of those funds are being funneled through Montgomery County. So we contacted the, uh, are working with the Kettering Community Courts uh, to try to head off evictions there, working with Miami, oh, sorry, Montgomery County to, uh, for funds to connect those persons with the funds, and the Dayton Mediation Center, which is working throughout the entire county now, to try to, uh, balance, or, or to try to mediate uh, any conflicts in there. As part of that, we just agree, uh, are signing an agreement with Montgomery County that we will administer the fund, our staff will administer the funds for those, um, rental relief dollars, uh, for Kettering residents, Centerville residents, Marin residents, and Washington Township residents. So that's, that part is a little bit unique, that we're working, uh, for all those communities on this. There has to be some kind of COVID-related issue with that. It's just not free money to give out, but, uh, income-qualified and associated with a COVID-related issue. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have on that.
Any questions? No, thank you. A very comprehensive, uh, memo here, and, uh, much appreciated. So, uh, commission comments. Mr. Schimmern?
I'm just gonna second the much appreciated, so with the new zoning code, there's a lot of things that don't come before us, so it helps to kinda keep up on what's going on, so we really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, and I guess my comment is, our next meeting will actually be a special meeting then? Or not? Eight, cause I had penciled in here eight-thirty-twenty-one, or?
Yes, we were anticipating that, um, we would have, uh, one or two items, uh, cases that were coming up, just because August has a fifth Monday.
Right.
And the first Monday in September is a holiday. It would be, um, six weeks until the next potential meeting. There are no items, uh, right now that have come forward, so we will.
So when I announce, it's basically our next regularly scheduled meeting will be, uh,
It'll be, um, yeah, September twenty-first. Oh, sorry, no, no, that's wrong. September tw- September twentieth.
Okay. Cool.
Yeah.
All right. And I guess before we wrap up here, uh, any, any comments from, uh, Ms. Fisher? All right. Uh, with that then, we will adjourn this, uh, regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kettering Planning Commission for Monday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, at nine oh-nine PM until our next regularly- scheduled meeting on September 20th, 2021. Thank you all.